Good afternoon. I would like to thank everyone for coming to this evening's joint committee hearing. I would like to acknowledge my council members and our staff that are present, and thank you to President Protem Tyson, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Councilmember Shannon Harden for co-sponsoring this hearing, and for Councilmember Michael Stenziano for attending. The intention of this public hearing is to review legislation specifically ordinance 255-2016, which appeared on the Monday, October 17 council agenda as an emergency in the Housing Committee. It was tabled indefinitely pending today's hearing with passage expected on November 7. My colleagues and I will hear testimony on the city's five-year consolidated submission to the United States Housing and Urban Development Department. I want to thank the following individuals for their participation this evening and for being a part of the consolidated submission process. Director Joe Lombardi, Director of Finance, Steve Shoney, Director of Development, Steve Highland, Fiscal Manager, Recreation and Parks, Dr. Audrey Regan, Director of Sexual Health Promotion at Public Health, Derek Anderson, Deputy Director of Department of Neighborhoods, and also Dr. Long, who I saw earlier. I will now turn our hearing over to President Protem Tyson.
I'm truly excited about this afternoon's hearing, not only because of what this process means in terms of its financial implications for our city, but also what it means to the great communities in which we live. The 2015 to 2019 Consolidated Plan outlines how funding from the federal government will support the programs and services that our residents and neighborhoods have come to depend upon. This plan demonstrates how we prioritize our Community Development Block Grants, the Home Investment Partnerships, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS improves the quality of life for our residents. The Consolidated Plan provides a strategy to improve the economic conditions and fortunes of residents in our community. The plan focuses on enhancing affordable housing, services for special needs populations, housing options for elderly, equal access to housing, and self-sufficiency for low-income residents. This is just a few of the areas highlighted in the plan. As Councilmember Page indicated, ordinance number 255-2016 was on the council agenda on Monday, October 17 as emergency legislation in the Housing Committee. This ordinance was tabled indefinitely pending today's hearing and is expected to be voted on Monday, November 7, the City Council hearing. Passing this ordinance will allow the City of Columbus time to submit this application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by the November 15 deadline. The Community Block Grant Appropriation Ordinance, after it is prepared and submitted to the City Clerk, will be placed on the Finance Committee for the final consideration passage beginning of next year. The federal grant submission requires a five-year consolidated plan describing the intended use of the funds, as well as updated annual action plan be submitted as part of the process for continuing this funding. The 2017 Action Plan represents the third year of the current five-year plan. I'm looking forward to learning more about the details of our consolidated plan, as well as hearing from our presenters this afternoon. We will now hear from our colleague, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, who chairs the Economic Development, Environment, Education, and Administrative Committees of Columbus City Council. Good afternoon, Councilmember Brown.
Good afternoon, President Protem Tyson. Thank you, Chairperson Page. I am happy to be here. Thank you to the directors for participating in the hearing today. The ordinance presents the five-year consolidated submission for community planning and development programs. The broad purpose of these federal funds is to help meet the needs of the low-to-moderate income community in Columbus, particularly in the areas of housing and economic development. The consolidated submission consists of the plan itself, the consolidated plan, the Citizen Participation Plan, and the Action Plan. The consolidated plan and related components consolidate into one single submission the planning and application aspects of the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnership, or HOM, Emergency Solution Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, or HOPOA, programs. The plan represents a continued commitment to providing decent housing and suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities via its economic development goals. So thanks again for having me, Councilmember Page, and I will turn it back over to you.
Again, thank you, President Protem Tyson and Councilmember Brown. Tonight, we will hear from each of the city's departments that administer the grants which the city receives from HUD via the Consolidated Plan. Before we begin, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? All right, well, I will now turn it over to Director Lombardi for a presentation.
Good evening. Turn that on. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairpage, President Protem Tyson, and other members of council. This evening, I will be presenting the city's 2017 Action Plan. I will present a brief overview of the grants program, then speak to the portion that is relative to the Department of Finance and Management. After that overview, it will be followed by other members of the administration who will speak to the specifics of their program. Before I start, I would like to thank my staff, who works very hard to put this plan together each year, Carolyn Thurman, Kathy England, and Amanda Landon, who is with us here this evening. They do a tremendous job of putting this together and working with our departments to ensure that these plans are submitted to HUD on time, and we've done a really, really good job about doing that, so I wanted to thank them this evening. I will be talking in round numbers. Some of my slides will show the actual numbers, but as I speak, I'll be speaking more in the round numbers. The City of Columbus is an entitlement jurisdiction that receives federal funds from Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, to support local community development and affordable housing activities. The Consolidated Plan was developed with input from residents, neighborhood organizations, and other community representatives, and is a collaborative effort which the community identifies its housing, homeless, and community development needs. As a condition of receiving these funds, the City of Columbus is required by HUD to submit a five-year consolidated plan, which outlines the city's housing and community development needs and priorities. In 2014, the city did develop the current 2015 to 2019 Consolidated Plan, and the 2017 Action Plan describes the activities and programs for the third year of the Consolidated Plan and addresses the use for these funds for affordable housing opportunity, community and economic development, health, recreation, and social services. This budget consists of four HUD grants: Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG; Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOM; Emergency Shelter Grant, or ESG; Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, or HOPOA. The city must submit yearly grant applications to HUD for these grants. This is known as the Action Plan. The 2017 Proposed Action Plan outlines the city's grant resources, the yearly budgets, as well as a description of the proposed programs and activities. The total Action Plan is approximately $12.8 million. As you can see on your screens, this is how it's broken down by each of the grants, and I will begin to speak briefly about each one of those grants. CDBG is the largest of these grants, and the proposed CDBG budget for 2017 is just over $7.7 million. Of this amount, 84% or $6.5 million represents new HUD entitlement monies. The balance of the CDBG revenue is program income and prior year carryover. The city is estimating an 8.14% decrease over the 2016 funding levels. This 2017 budget represents a decrease of $688,000 over the 2016 budget, due primarily to a decrease in available carryover. CDBG monies are designed to assist low-to-moderate income residents and address blighted conditions within our city. There are restrictions to the CDBG funds. CDBG fund regulations limit the amount of funding that can be used for public service type of activities. These activities include youth, health and homeless services, and no more than 15% of the CDBG funds can be spent on public services. The CDBG regulations also limit the amount of funding that can be spent on administrative and planning activities. No more than 20% of the CDBG funds can be spent on administrative and planning activities. The proposed programs that make up the public service and administration and planning caps are identified on page 64 of the 2017 Action Plan. The Home Investment Partnership Program is budgeted at $3.6 million. Home entitlement funding is projected to be level funding from 2016. Home program income is projected at $450,000. These funds are administered through the Department of Development and are used primarily to increase homeownership opportunities in the preservation and production of affordable rental housing. Community housing development organizations, or CHDOs, will be funded using home dollars as follows. Affordable Housing Opportunity Program project dollars is approximately $2.6 million. Operating support is approximately $160,000. Project set aside is $481,000, and administration is $365,000. The Emergency Solution Grant is funded at $580,000 and is used to coordinate and stabilize the base funding of emergency shelter programs. This is a level funding request from 2016. The Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS grant is budgeted at $859,000. This, again, is level funding from 2016. This grant is administered through the Columbus Public Health and is used to address the housing needs of low-income persons affected with HIV/AIDS and their families. This program operates in 88 county areas. And as we said earlier, the total 2017 Action Plan is $12.8 million. This budget provides for five departments: Development, Health, Recreation and Parks, Neighborhoods, and Finance, to implement programs and contracts that involve housing, economic development, social services, and planning activities. This proposed budget lists the programs, their respective funding level, and a program narrative description. Since 2012, the total program has seen a funding reduction of approximately 18%, affected mostly from shifting to awarding more grants than loans and outsourcing economic development loan program to subrecipients. This program income stays with the subrecipients rather than coming back to the city. Some of the programs will be administered directly by community agencies. The city anticipates entering into approximately 20 subrecipient agency contracts. There is a public process to the development of this budget. The city began a 30-day public notice process on October 8, 2016. The public notice process is to inform the public of the proposed consolidated plan, the Action Plan budget, and the Citizen Participation Plan, and to receive their comments. We would like to receive any comments by November 7, 2016. However, earlier the better. Additional information for those that are listening this evening is we can have hard copies available to you by coming to our offices at 90 West Broad Street, 4th floor, or we can also have you by calling our offices at 614-645-8600, or by visiting our website at www.columbus.gov/finance, and then search under "Grant and Management." Please send any comments to the City of Columbus through an email, as well to amandalandon@columbus.gov. Now, I'd like to speak as it relates to the Finance and Management Department's CDBG budget. The department's 2017 budget totaled approximately $485,000 in CDBG monies, used primarily for four staff and the supplies for that staff. Working with other departments, staff is responsible for numerous areas of grant administration for these four grant programs and other eligible HUD grant programs. This activity provides for budget development, management of financial resources, regulatory compliance, HUD reporting, and monitoring. The city will also continue a contract for loan collecting in the amount of $92,000 of the city's Housing and Economic Development Loan portfolio with Ameri National Community Services, Inc. That concludes my briefing for this evening, and I want to thank you again for the opportunity to present the 2017 Action Plan, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Lombardi. Are there any questions for the director? President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. The funding in the Consolidated Plan from the CDBG, the HOM, HOPOA, and ESG are sometimes force amplifiers for the city's general fund. For example, HOM has a 25% match requirement. The other way of looking at that is that every dollar we spend, the federal government provides us with four. So the question would be, is there a way by which the city can leverage its resources to increase home funds beyond the roughly $3.7 million identified for 2017?
I'm going to have -- see if Amanda can answer that for you.
Thank you.
The answer is no. We are an entitlement community. It's a formula-based allocation from the federal government's entire pot of money.
And so, we are -- so the dollars that we're presenting here, that's pretty much, we can't get any more dollars. This is the dollars we're going to be getting in our community, and certainly, we're going to be utilizing some of our dollars to be able to support the dollars that are going to be from the Consolidated Plan. Is that correct?
Correct. It's an anticipated amount based on the 2016 allocation.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. My question is about administrative costs. Are they increasing in 2017, and is there an increased allowance of the use of federal funds for those internal staffing costs?
Could you repeat that? She didn't hear.
Administrative costs. Are they increasing under this plan? Is there an increased allowance from federal funds for administrative costs?
The answer is no. The 20% cap is a regulation. It has not been changed, and the 2017 portion of the admin dollars has been reduced proportionally to the overall reduction in the CDBG budget.
Okay, so then the rest are programmatic funds?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Chairpage. I had a question. Director, you spoke about subrecipients of grants. How do we work with them in terms of metrics that may be connected back to the overall CDBG programming? How do we connect?
Councilmember Harden, with the indulgence of my colleague, I'll take that question. We do have metrics in all of our contracts for those subrecipients, for example, that are doing our small business loans, which I know is key to you and the Small Business Committee. We have metrics related to the number of loans that are put through, the number of jobs that are created. We also look at what is their success in collecting on those loans, what is their default rate. So we have a number of metrics that we'd be happy to go through with you.
Thank you. And this has been a concerted effort, as we've gone along, to work with these community partners that we believe are helping us meet these community-wide metrics in a variety of areas. Is that correct? And we're continuing to look for those partners.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. We look very carefully at those. We look at it from a couple opportunities. One is, what are organizations that are already doing great work that we can support? And what are organizations that are frankly doing it better than we are? For example, the city used to do all the loan analysis, do all the loan servicing, make the loans ourselves. We found a number of years ago that we just weren't as efficient at it as the private and not-for-profit sector, so that's when we outsourced a lot of that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. If there are no further questions, we can now move on to our presentation from Director Shoney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Director Lombardi did, I want to make sure to start by acknowledging my team, who did some fantastic work on putting together this budget and the Action Plan, as well as the budget that we're all getting ready to release. Julia Carter, Bill Webster, Rory McGinnis, and Hannah Jones have all been deeply involved in this, and they're back in the back, and I want to thank them for their work. Any mistakes in this presentation are my presentation and not their preparation. So, the Department of Development's CDBG Home and Emergency Solutions Grant budget for 2017 shows, in total, is about $9.6 million. This level of funding represents a 5.9% decrease from the 2016 budget. The 2017 CDBG budget in particular for the Department of Development is approximately $6 million and supports 36 full-time staff. This level of funding represents a 13.5% decrease from the 2016 original budget of $6.9 million. The Home budget for 2017 for the Department of Development is approximately $3.7 million and includes, as Director Lombardi had said, about $450,000 in program income. These funds are used to increase homeownership opportunities and help with our preservation and production of affordable rental housing. The Emergency Solutions Grant for 2017 is funded at $580,000 and is used to coordinate and stabilize the base of funding for emergency shelter programs. The next slide shows our breakdown among the different operations within the Department of Development and the use of funds. I just want to highlight a couple of things. As you can see on the graph, approximately half of our funding through CDBG goes to support our housing programs. Included in that funding is support for the following programs: the Emergency Repair Program, our Vacant Property Prevention Program, our Chores and Deaf Services Program, as well as a small amount of miscellaneous contract services to help with appraisals, title searches, and other technical assistance related to our programming. The second-largest portion of the funding is for economic development. This funding is broken down to about $143,000 to the Neighborhood Design Center to help with our programs to support both community organizations that do planning in our neighborhoods, as well as working with our facade improvement program and interior improvement grant programs. They do a fantastic job of design for small businesses throughout our community. It includes $72,000 in funding for our Neighborhood Economic Development Fund, which supports the NCR program, the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. Code Enforcement receives funding of about $1 million. That funding is for our environmental nuisance abatement, our EBA team that goes out and works to clean up sites that we can't get the private owners to clean up, as well as $160,000 for weed abatement. The other large portion of this is our land redevelopment program. That funding is for personnel. We fund all of our demolition and maintenance through either capital dollars or operating funds, or the Land Management Fund. So, as noted earlier, we are facing some significant cuts coming forward this year due to, as Director Lombardi outlined, some challenges on the revenue side. This chart shows where we are taking those cuts. You will note a couple, three items in particular where you're seeing zeros in terms of what we're going to be funding out of this year's CDBG budget. Those programs are going to be covered by funds that we already have on hand. So even though this shows a zeroing out of those programs for 2017, we do have balances on hand that will allow us to support those programs, particularly in home modification. For the Home Modification Program, we currently have a balance of about $550,000 of cash on hand. For the Vacant Property Prevention Program, we have a balance in excess of $1 million on hand. And for land redevelopment properties, we have a substantial capital allocation out of the city's capital budget that will allow us to continue with the programming that had been previously funded by CDBG. Yeah, please.
Just a question. So, for example, the Home Modification Program, you say you have still about $550,000 in the program. And so, my question is, is it because we -- what's the reason that we still have so much money in that fund?
We need to do a better job of moving money. So, we have -- we faced a couple of challenges. One is that the CDBG funding and regulatory system is very cumbersome, and so it's always a challenge to get things moving. We're still also facing some of the after-effects of the housing crisis, where we're not seeing as much interest in our CDBG-funded programs. The other impact that we're seeing is frankly, council has been very generous to us. Councilmember Tyson, you have sponsored some of our home repair programs. Those programs are sometimes more advantageous for homeowners, so as we cycle through that programming, we'll probably see more of an uptick in the desire to use some of these CDBG funds.
And so, I know that we want to get the dollars that we certainly have put in to the home repair programs that certainly want to help have a better understanding as to why those dollars aren't being moved as quickly. I know that we have certainly tried to add more staffing to you to be able to do it, but I also know that it requires also vendors to be able to do the work. So, if, again, please let us know if there is a reason why those dollars aren't getting out, because we certainly know that homes need to be repaired to keep our community stable, neighborhood stabilized. So, but I'm glad we still have dollars, but again, let us know.
Yeah, and I want to assure you, it is one of our priorities to figure out how to more effectively deploy these dollars while still making sure we're being good stewards of the public's money.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm taking the chair's prerogative and calling for questions, but...
So, I have a question about, actually, a couple on some of these costs and trends. The land redevelopment property stabilization, which has been moved to a capital expenditure, do you anticipate into the future you'll always meet that need through capital expenditures just because the CDBG dollars seem to be trending down?
The land, that's a very difficult question to answer. Land, and it's, how much time do we have? Land redevelopment is undergoing an incredible amount of flux right now in terms of its funding. So, we have, as I said, $3.5 million in capital funding from the city. The federal government, operating through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, has actually, I think we are now up to about $20 million in demolition funds that we're partnering with the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corp., COSIC, better known as the County Land Bank, to try and move through. We have made incredible strides in removing the worst of the worst properties in our city, and so I can't really predict for you what we're going to need in the future for that program, because we have all this money for demolition. We have substantial money, and we're making fundamental change to what the nature of vacant and abandoned properties, particularly residential properties in this community, looks like. So, you're asking the right question, and it's just too early to give you the answer.
Okay. So, behind that is my general concern that, you know, should we be alarmed that the decreasing CDBG funds are forcing us to do this on the capital side? It sounds like you're not sure of that, just in terms of long-term planning.
The, we, as we look at the decreasing funds for CDBG, yes, there is reason to be, we are trying to be planful to look at what our options are in the future. We take the trends that Director Lombardi talked about very, very seriously, and we're talking all the time about how do we plan for those, how do we look at other opportunities. I think alarmed is too strong a word. We are being very careful about how we think about the future of CDBG dollars.
Okay. And just one more question. The chart of the last five years, I think you had CDBG funds. Yes. The 2013 number, very similar to this year's number, and it's like we enjoyed some greater funds for a few years. And I'm just curious, what... And I'm just curious, what, you know, what were those, that extra $1.5 million?
I don't have the answer to that question, and I don't know, I'm assuming Joe doesn't. Amanda, do you know the answer to what the spike was for 13 and 14, or 14 and 15?
Looking at home or...
CDBG.
Our entitlement award actually did go up a few years ago.
Our entitlement award, if I'm recalling correctly, did go up about 2012, '13, strictly based on the entitlement, and I believe in 2014, we had a large carryover number.
Okay.
And Councilmember Brown, we'll take the time to go back and get you a complete answer on that as well.
Okay. It's just interesting, because this year seems like, wow, we're really seeing this trend in cuts, but then if you look back five years ago, maybe there were just a couple years of more monies, and this is closer to stabilization. I don't know. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions before I move? Nope, okay. Okay. So, we have a number of accomplishments that we'll get you a full briefing on later, but I did want to highlight a few of the things that we're doing with these very substantial funds. In the home program, we, so far in 2016, have helped 74 new homeowners with down payment assistance. In the Emergency Solutions Grant, we've provided shelter to almost 5,000 people in the most dire situations in our community. Through CDBG, we have helped 840 households with assistance in order to create decent, affordable, and safe housing. Economic development has created or retained 3,500 jobs through just the CDBG portion of our budget. Code Enforcement has removed graffiti from 123 parcels in our community. And land redevelopment has, well, it says on here that we have blighted 1,200 properties. We didn't do the blight, but we have maintained and worked on the blight on 1,200 properties around our city. Looking forward, there we go, looking forward to 2017, in terms of our proposed goals, despite the cuts, we are still looking to help 70 households with down payment assistance. In the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, we're looking to provide rapid rehousing or shelter to 9,000 of our residents. Just a quick point of comparison, this is not a directly comparable number to the number on the previous slide, that was folks in shelter. This is both, this is both the rapid rehousing and the shelter. For the CDBG funding, we hope to have 850 households receive rehabilitation assistance. We hope to maintain our great record of job creation and about 3,500 new or retained jobs. For Code Enforcement, we plan to mow or remove waste from 500 properties in the CDBG areas. And for land redevelopment, we hope to maintain nearly 1,500 blighted properties around the city.
President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, can you just speak to the 850 households that will receive rehabilitation, and what type of rehabilitation assistance are we providing?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I will venture an answer, and if I'm incorrect, we will get you the correct answer. But my understanding is with these funds, and part of the hesitation is we have multiple funding sources, and I want to make sure I've got the right program. This is typically emergency home repair programs. So, in the winter, if you have a person who doesn't have heat, or their plumbing breaks, or they, you know, a tree falls through the roof, and they don't have the financial capacity to make their home a decent, safe, and sanitary place to live, these funds help us address those needs.
Thank you. Just, I think it's important that, I don't know if a lot of people know that they have those funds available, and so certainly would hope that Chairwoman Page will hopefully be able to provide those documents to, and you can provide those information to our residents, because I don't think that people know that we do that.
Yeah, and I think that's a fantastic point, President Protem. The, and we partner very closely with our friends in the Neighborhoods Department and the 311 Call Center. They do a great job of when residents call into the 311 Call Center, getting them routed to our specialists who can help them solve those problems. And just one last thing, I'm going to apologize in advance, I may have to leave out of here shortly, and Rory McGinnis will be here to cover if you have any other questions as things come up.
Thank you, Director Shoney. Are there any other questions? Do you have one before you step out, or?
No, I'm, I'm still here for a little bit.
Okay. You talked briefly about the funding that will go to Code Enforcement, and we believe a little over $800,000 will be designated to them. Can you talk about, like, how that money is designated? Is it for specific areas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. Yes, we are required to use that money solely in CDBG-eligible census tracts. So, we make sure that we allocate that to those Code Enforcement areas that are CDBG-eligible. And it's something that we are, we try to be very careful in terms of how we track.
Thank you, and I do have another question. Can you just talk briefly about, like, the scope of our affordable housing problem across the city and how these funds will make a dent in that?
The, the scope of our affordable housing problem across the city is, you know, if you were to ask me for one word, I'd say it's daunting. We are blessed to have a strong economy and a strong employment base, and that brings a lot of great things, but it has also led to an affordable housing challenge for our city. That by some estimates, we need tens of thousands of additional affordable housing units throughout our city. And we're seeing great growth in affordable housing, and we have some great partners. But this, without this money, both the home funds and the CDBG funds, we could not really support those, those low-income housing providers that are trying to meet that gap. So, for instance, the CHODO funding comes out of this program, and the CHODO funding is used to support developers who are trying to build low and moderate-income housing through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. It's a key point of leverage that gets us points, that allows us to really make sure that we provide as much housing as we can. In addition to what I talked about earlier with President Protem Tyson's question on the home repair programs and making sure that folks can actually stay in their homes that already have homes, so that's a critical element of our strategy.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Brown.
I do have one more question, just about some economic development work done through these funds. Can you discuss the way we interact with outside economic development organizations like ECDI? Do we provide them with the kinds of businesses that we seek to identify? Do we give them total autonomy to determine that? And then how do we measure those goals?
So, we have four key partners on the small business lending side. Increase CDC, CCDC, which is Community, gosh, I'm sorry, I'm so used to the acronym, I forget what it actually stands for, Community, anyway, CCDC. Increase CDC and ECDI. We have contracts with them to do our lending. Each of them concentrates on a different element of the small business lending realm. So, you have Increase CDC that's doing very small loans to startups, and I forgot to say Finance Fund. Whereas at the other end of the spectrum, you have Finance Fund that's trying to bundle larger loans together for small businesses that are trying to make larger capital investments. We work very closely with those groups to identify potential customers for their services. They, part of the reason we have them is they go out and try and market our loans to city businesses. It really is a symbiotic relationship where we are working very closely together to make sure that we identify those businesses and then get them to the complete set of services. So, it's not just about getting them to ECDI for a loan, but it's then getting them to the SBDC for certain services, and it's getting them connected with COIC as they need workforce, and doing all those things to make sure we really try and give them a complete set of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I don't think we have any further questions. We will now move on to our presentation from Dr. Audrey Regan, Director of Sexual Health Promotion at Public Health.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair Page, as well as Councilwoman Protem Tyson and the other council members for being here. I am Dr. Audrey Regan, and I lead Columbus Public Health Sexual Health Promotion area. There are several activities that are performed through the Community Development Block Grant, and these include the Sexual Health Awareness Campaign and Housing for People Living with HIV and AIDS. For many years, the CDBG Block Grant has enabled Columbus Public Health to provide STI and pregnancy screening services to adolescents in Franklin County. And this is really very important work, because adolescents are disproportionately impacted by STIs and reproductive health issues. In fact, by the age of 25, half of all youth will have acquired one or more sexually transmitted infections. The rates of chlamydia and gonorrhea are quite high in Franklin County, exceeding the national rates, and there's over 1,000 births among adolescents in our county. This year, Columbus Public Health refocused its programmatic efforts and launched the Teen Outreach Program. The Teen Outreach Program is an evidence-based youth development program for youth between 12 and 17 years of age. It lowers the risk of suspension, course failure, and pregnancy. It can be implemented in a school setting, in an after-school setting, in a community-based setting. The program lasts nine months, essentially the academic year, and the program meets one to two times each week during that academic year. There are five community-based organizations here in Franklin County that we are partnering with to implement this Teen Outreach Program. Second, Columbus Public Health is launching a partnership with Columbus City Schools to increase STI screening on school campuses during this academic year. We are beginning with a small pilot of four high schools that actually launched today. We're quite excited about it. Columbus Public Health will educate and screen youths for STIs, and a major component of this STI screening is education and individualized risk reduction plans. And specifically for women who do not intend to get pregnant, there will be a very tight referral to the Women's Health Clinic at Columbus Public Health, as well as a partnership with the Vaccine Preventable Infections Program to assure that eligible youth receive all necessary vaccines. We do this while we continue to offer broader pregnancy support services in the community. There we go, all right. The second program is a housing assistance program for people living with HIV and AIDS, otherwise known as HAPWA. And achieving viral suppression for the over 4,000 people living in central Ohio with HIV is a major goal, because it improves both their quality of life, as well as reduces the chances of spreading the infection. However, achieving viral suppression, achieving viral suppression means quarterly doctor's visits, laboratory tests, as well as following a tough medication-therapy regimen. It's really tough work. And if you don't have stable housing, then your ability to prioritize and effectively manage your disease is limited. So, CDBG, along with the HAPWA program and the Ryan White Program, provides supportive housing services for individuals living with HIV in central Ohio. Through CDBG and HAPWA, Columbus Public Health has provided 100 households with long-term rent, and an additional 47 households with short-term rent and/or utility assistance. This also is available along with housing case management services and referrals to other community services that are available. So, in conclusion, this work that Columbus Public Health is able to do is because of the Community Development Block Grant and HAPWA support, and I sincerely thank you for this continued support, which allows us to protect health and improve lives here in Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regan. Are there any questions for, I do have a one. For the program that you talked about at the schools, will this require, like, permission or consent from the parents?
Absolutely. Parents consent, yes.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we now have a presentation by Steve Hyland with the Recreation and Parks Department.
Thank you, Councilmember Page and members of council. The Recreation and Parks portion of the Community Development Block Grant is $712,000. This is a 9% decrease from the 2,000 budget, or approximately $66,000. The 2017 budget funds these three programs, I'm going to briefly discuss. First is the Capital Kids After-School Program, that's $313,000 worth of this. These funds are to cover four full-time staffs at sites, including Feddersen, Marion Franklin, Sullivan Gardens, and Beatty Recreation Center. Each site serves 30 to 35 children in grades kindergarten to fifth grade per day. They provide academic assistance, enrichment activities, recreation and socialization skills, family involvement, and nutrition, nutritionist meals and snacks daily as well. Additionally, the program operates full day camps during the spring break and an eight-week summer program. The second program we offer with these funds is the Schools Out Program. It's approximately $138,000 of the community development funds. The Schools Out Program is a nine-week summer camp. It's offered for $25 per week to income-eligible participants, and serves approximately 300 children ages six to 14 during the summer months at Feddersen, Thompson, Howard, and Blackburn Recreation Centers. This is one of the areas we had to make the cuts for the 9% decrease. We had a director position that, a center director position, that they were retiring anyway, so we're picking up that work with a zone manager from the Recreation and Park area. And we also eliminated the one-week winter and spring break camp that we were offering in this program. The third program we offer is, it's just part-time recreational staff at centers, including Barnett, Beatty, Blackburn Dodge, Driving Park, Far East, Howard, Linden, Marion Franklin and Thompson. These funds enable the staff to provide additional recreation opportunities for children at eligible community centers. So far, in 2016, more than 1,000 classes programs have been offered, and more than 12,000 children have been helped by our frontline staff. The funding allows us to continue our important work with the children who participate at these centers. The reductions in this area were just reductions to part-time as well. And if you have any questions, those are the three programs that we offer with the Community Development Block Grant funding.
President Protem Tyson.
Thanks, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. You just mentioned that you have a spring camp and a winter camp, during the breaks, the spring break and winter break?
Correct.
Is that correct? And so, because of the loss of funding, we won't be able to have those camps?
At this time, we are not funding those with the Schools Out Program, correct?
Thank you. And how many children would have participated in both of those camps?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to look through the notes and see. It's 300 children throughout the summer, so I'm probably about 40 per each, each one of those camps that are being offered now.
Okay.
I'll get the correct number to you for sure on that, though.
All right. Thank you very much. I know those are important to families when there's families still having, parents having to still go to work, or caregivers having to go to work, and, and they're not, don't have time off during that period, and thinking about where those children go. So, to get, you know, obviously to be around a caring adult, being able to have, you know, healthy meals during that period, so. And maybe you can get back with us and just let us know what's, what's the cost of something like that. That would be helpful to know.
Yes, I'll definitely give you the breakdown of the numbers, how many we serve and how much it actually costs for those weeks of camp that we're eliminating, for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Are there any further questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Hyland. I do not believe that we have any speaker slips this evening, so I will open up for any closing comments from any of my colleagues, and thank you to all of the presenters this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page, for leading this, this hearing. I think after we've heard throughout this conversation, CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant funds touch so many programs that the community knows by name, but not, maybe not know the, the funding source. And so, as this consolidates, as we are two years into this, five years... And so as this consolid, as we are two years into this five-year consolidated plan, we appreciate the folks that came down to, to hear how, how we are spending our, our resources to see how we will engage and support these very important programs that touch communities in need throughout 2017. Certainly want to thank you for your leadership of this hearing, of the, your committees. Certainly want to thank my colleagues for their input, the directors for their briefing today. We look forward to further conversation as we bring this consolidated plan to council during, this, this Monday? Is it, November 7th? So we encourage, if you weren't able to come down to, to the hearing, that you engage with us at council on, on Monday, November 7th, as we plan to vote on this important plan. Thank you again for allowing me to participate.
President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. And I want to remind everyone that comments about the plan should be directed to Amanda Landon of the Department of Finance and Management. Amanda can be reached at capital A, capital N, Landon, at columbus.gov. You can also request hard copies of the plan by calling Department of Finance and Management at 614-645-8600, or by visiting the department's website at www.columbus.gov and looking for Grants Management. Do my colleagues have any other closing remarks?
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. I would just like to thank all of our staffs for working together to put this hearing together. You all did a lot of work to make sure that we, as councilmembers, were prepared, but also that we are sharing the correct information with our residents. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Before we conclude this afternoon's hearing, I'd like to thank, again, Chairwoman Jaisa Page for chairing the hearing this evening, also Councilmembers Brown and Harden for co-sponsoring the, the hearing. Each of you have come out this, and to each of you have come out to this hearing to participate in tonight's hearing and offer testimony. I want to thank our presenters, Joe Lombardi, the Director of Department of Finance and Management, Director Steve Shoney, the Director of Department of Development, Audrey Regan, Sexual Health Promotion Director from Columbus Public Health. We also want to thank Steve Highland and Derek Anderson for being here tonight, and certainly Steve for giving the information from Recreation and Parks. The council staff, want to thank Council President Zach Klein, each of the council members and their staffs, notably Rolanda Hampton, James Carmian, Kelsey Ellingson, Zach Davidson, and Nancy Sully, who helped pull this hearing together and who serve each, each day with pride in our community. I want to thank Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Office. I want to thank John Oswald from the council's Legislative Research Office, as well as Matt Erickson, who staffs finance for the, the Finance Committee for Council. Of course, my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams. And lastly, I mean, the hard-working team of CTV, who allow these hearings to be possible, and finds the residents, who allow each of us to serve this community, which is the best place to live, work, and to raise a family. And with that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.